And that's when ACO and, well, actually, cities did the same thing. They came up, they put their own deal together with the MAG, schools did the same thing, and counties. They all kind of basically just formed their own self-insurance and have a large insurance company back them, big stuff, and then try to self-insure and pool everybody together. It just, and I don't see that environment changing much. You know, a big county, you know, like Enid or Garfield or Norman, you know, some of those have options available, but rural counties really don't.
Don't have that many options.
Yeah.
How many options do we have?
I think this is it, you know, and this is their association, so that's where it's important to be involved with them and make sure they're doing it right and...
Right.
You know, because basically, they said on the board that it's their insurance company in a sense.
Mm-hmm.
And I think by and large, they've done a good job. I try to monitor pretty close and just, you know, through the years, the rates have been pretty minimal and, of course, you know, property, you know, took some pretty good hits, you know, with all our hail and tornadoes and everything. Basically, it's been in a neighborhood of about a, not more than a 3% increase over the last 10 years annually, which is pretty modest in this environment.
Yeah.
And I guess the other advantage is if it's operated properly, none of it's going to profit anywhere. It's basically, you know, in their pool and the better, when they have good years, that just leaves their reserves in better shape.
Right.
In theory.
Yeah, in theory. Like you say, it's self-insure.
It is.
Yeah.
With the backup, you know.
Like a large corporation would do.
Yes. And that's what's insurance about, spreading that risk around all over the state, you know, hopefully, everybody's going to get the same tornado or hailstorms or...
Right.
Lawsuits.
It kind of spreads that code around too that they put you under, I guess.
Yeah.
It's an industry code that they go under for the county.
For the workers' comp, you know, again, the same thing applies as far as, you know, it's like insurance there, but I'm not sure, you know, how, I've never been involved with that side of it, so I'm not sure how many codes they break it down within. Now, there is an industry code overall, and then, of course, they should have it rubbing down clerical and, you know, machine operators and truck drivers and things like that, you know, if they know where comp code or policy is.
The roll call.
All stories. Marvin Nolan and Clark's Lady.
We want to recognize our guests and thank everybody for being here. Item number four, sign appropriations, transfer check. Need a motion on item number four.
I have a motion.
All in favor. The roll call, we get ready.
All stories.
Yes.
Marvin Nolan. Then, Clark's Lady.
Yes.
On item number five, approving the commission proceedings, we'll make a motion if we approved last week's minutes.
All set.
All stories.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Marvin, I have to...
Okay, item number six, three blanket POs, y'all, attention, look at that, need a motion. Are we making a motion?
All set.
Clark's second, I'm all in favor.
Marvin Nolan. All stories.
Yes.
Clark's Lady.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, the signing, I believe everybody signed in. Is anybody, was there five minutes talking about anything?
I've got a question for you, Paul.
Okay.
I had some people ask me this weekend, and I couldn't answer their question, why was the courthouse closed on Friday?
Due to reunion days.
Why, I mean?
Because last year it become a, it was a big issue, so all the employees at the courthouse agreed to use one of their vacation days or sick days or personal days, and it was taking off their time. That's the reason last, well, like I said, last year it was a disaster. And we just basically done it for the people.
Can I add to that? Each of the officers, the county officials, received notice from the chamber that they would not be using this back parking lot, so they really, they could have stayed open. We didn't use the back parking lot.
Well, we called, the chamber came to us last year, you know, complaining.
Well, but this year she sent out, she gave a written notice.
I never did see a written notice.
I didn't get one.
I didn't get one.
I didn't receive one.
She handed them out, you know, the thing that she hands out...
I did not receive one.
I did not receive one.
Well, I would check with Janice if her, you all, because she picked them out.
It was over parking? Y'all closed because of parking?
Well, see, normally, they take up the, for the reunion days, they take up this whole back with games and parking and things like that.
Boots.
But the last...
Handicap parking was even taken last year.
Last year, yeah.
We couldn't get handicapped, and there was nothing.
It was discussed last year about closing, and ultimately, we decided not to. Janice Williams, the chamber director, was in our office the Monday morning after in tears about all the problems she had encountered with employees being parked in the way of what they was trying to do. And I didn't get the notice that they wasn't going to use the back parking lot.
Well, I'll have to check, because it was on some, something that she sends out and gives out to you all.
She told me that she sent me one, but I didn't receive one. And you can check with the other officers. Rhonda didn't receive one.
No, I did not. Well, I'll tell her. She brought us a flyer that said when it was going to be, and that, we posted it on the door.
Okay, now, I think it's on that flyer at the bottom that said, or anyway, some, something that she hands out to you all every time, something, that's where it's supposed to be on. But anyway, because we got asked too, when we were working in the historical society, and we got asked, in fact, some people were mad because the courthouse had been closed.
We were stopped last year. When we come into the parking lot, we were stopped and told we could not park here.
Where'd you park?
We parked down block away, two blocks away. But it was, the people that were trying to get in to the office couldn't even get in the parking lot.
Well, I just, as I said, I was talking to Paul only on this. I wanted to know why it was closed.
And I thought I answered your question.
You did, but I'm just saying, I wanted, that's all I was wanting was from him, and I didn't, I just couldn't figure out why they closed it over parking, but...
It's a misunderstanding that needs to be corrected.
That's fine, I just wanted to answer because I couldn't tell nobody the answer. I didn't know why.
Okay. All right.
Paul, I have a question.
Okay.
I do want to remind everyone that I'm recording this for the new Sentinel, and it'll be posted on the website a little later today, a little later this week before Friday. Last week, it was announced that the election board would need to have written confirmation that the resolution or that you would not be counting, they would not be counting the county question. I was wondering if that's been completed and if I could have a copy of that?
That has not been completed.
Okay, do you know when it'll be ready?
I hope it'll be ready next week. I've never had to do that on elections, so I may, but yes, I'll have it ready next week, I'll get on that.
Okay.
As soon as the meeting's over, so...
I didn't know if there was a deadline for that.
That's something I'm going to have to look into, because I've never run into that before.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I've got one for Rhonda. If that question's not answered on the ballot, will they kick it back out of the machine?
You can have an undervoted ballot, it may, but you can re-sign it.
I know, but how many times, what do you do if that just keeps kicking it out?
It should go through, I mean, it should be a problem, if you have any problem with it. But if you do, that's why your officials are there, they can manually fit it in.
Okay, that's what I was asking, what she did then, because...
Okay. Item number eight, discuss and consider reappointing Bill Cox as our insurance agent for this county.
I've got the renewal proposal, that's yours, Clark. We'll have to hold on to that one, and I think that top one's Marvin's and the bottom one's Paul's. I've kind of got highlighted your individual equipment and vehicles on the side, so review those when you get a chance, if we got anything on there that needs to come off or if there's any vehicles that we don't have on. It's on a blanket basis, but obviously, we want to try to keep as accurate as we can, you know, we read that all the time. But anyway, you'll have your staff look that over and make sure everything's good there. And as I said earlier in the meeting, the premiums are staying pretty level for the most part, and it went up from about $102,000 to $110,000 this year, about a 10% increase on the liability premium, about 5% on the property. And we've been your, I've been your agent for quite a number of years. We, a typical commission for insurance policy is 15% to 10. We reduced our commission to 4% several years ago to help the county out and still hopefully provide services that you need, so that's what we'd ask to continue at a 4% commission, taking care of what you need.
I have no problem with that, you just, y'all look at the payment options.
Yeah, they've got a first and second payment there already.
Anyway, first, I guess on item number eight, we need, I'm going to make a motion. Reappoint Bill Cox as our insurance agent. Roll call.
Stories.
Yes.
Marvin Nolan.
Clark's Lady. Yes.
Moving on to, did you see the two payment options, Clark? Did you see that? We made two payments, it's going to be 1500 or two higher.
1500 or higher, I reckon hundreds?
Yeah, 1500 and $2. If there's two payment options, we can make two payments or we can make one payment.
Yeah, they need to sign it there, whatever, one that decides which way they want to go.
If we make two payments, it'll cost $1,502 more, we'll make two payments.
What's the general practice in the past?
We've done it both ways, but most down, we make two payments, but this, the exit board makes one, make one payment. But, but... Is the county capable of making a...
I don't know what payment I'm supposed to make.
Well, I'd like to save the $1,502 if possible. She's got to pay to do it, I don't think I'd ask her. But the second payment will be due January 31st, which everybody realizes that I've remoted tax collector, but...
First payment's due when?
July 31st, excuse me. The second one is January 31st of 2017, so basically, our six months. It says here, the first installment is to be paid in full, but Jan, July 31st. And this is June, so I mean, we could table this till next week and get with Gail and get some numbers off hers, if we have a, if we have a month, but... Yeah.
Is that the number? We're making decisions.
You renewed that you can let the company know that they're...
On item number eight, but on item number nine, about our payment option, like I said, July 31st, there's going to be a payment made, whether it's the half or whole. If we do the half, January 31st, we'll have to make the other half, so basically, you're paying $1,502 interest for six months if you choose to make two payments. But we will talk with Gail, because I am right when we have, the way I'm reading this, July 31st.
Yeah, July 1st is when policy actually starts, so I think, I'd like to know what the idea is by then, but you've still got another meeting, you know, so you're all with that, yeah. That's not a problem.
I didn't know that has to be locked to a meeting, I think you guys just discuss it with Gail.
I think you probably can, and then, now, when you, you know, there's exactly that form that you sign.
Right.
And, but the resolution, I think, is separate as far as it just says to renew, and then they just wanted indication of which way you want to go on the payment.
Right.
So if you want to go ahead, since it's on the agenda and, okay, the renewal of the policy, I think that's probably appropriate. And, you know, go ahead and do that now while it's on the agenda and done, you know, you've got that, and then table the payment just between yourself, because it's really not affecting anything.
I can make a motion to renew the policy.
And that would be that, signing that resolution under the self-insured group.
I have a motion. Item number nine. I'm going to get roll call, you ready?
All stories.
Yes.
Clark's Lady. Marvin Nolan.
Will I just think, give it to you next one?
Yeah, actually, there's that one form needs to be signed, whichever way you check, so just have Karen get it with me or call me, and I can run, pick it up, whatever. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Hope it'd be hard to sign this today and check the option.
Whatever, I mean, you know, whatever you're comfortable with.
Just type, put that on June, if next, but we'll have next Monday.
Okay.
We'll talk to Gail. Item number 10. Discuss and take possible action, approve agreement with the Eastern Oklahoma Circuit of Engineering, figure to Peavy Road. That's yours, I won't let, I mean, I think he looked at that.
Where is Peavy Road?
Where is he located? Go one mile down to east-west, down the worst top, two million, slice down, chop calls, leave it on that road. A little $2 million job. It's paved. It's going to get paved.
And that was down, ten, point about, down the dead end.
And is there a cemetery there? No. And is there a cost to the county?
Did you say chop calls is paid for, Ron?
Yes. It's been in work for 10 years. I remember Charlotte Jackson, she had been in the...
So there's some feet under the nails, huh?
Yeah, Marvin, check it for me.
Okay, okay.
So does it look like it'll go? Yeah, it's cool. Good. It'll go one way or the other, it's just you got to wait for the environmentalists to put the delay on every project, you know. There's going to be a new bridge, and then, what is it, Marvin, just to have a mile road, isn't it?
Yeah, it goes a little over...
Little over a mile, so...
Almost 1.7. They're going to build a big concrete base, and if it's a river, it'll cost over $3 million. They're going to build a big concrete, recon, maintenance, and all your points, and not talk to them, notion of using their beams, just, you know, putting up, no, all that.
Yeah.
Let's see, it's going to have to buy a whole lot of waste. I told them we just put a pipe in, make a leak to it, and put the bridge back for the old one, or something.
Yeah. Okay, and you keep going, nothing?
Yeah. They're starting on that, they're... Yeah, they got started, that's true. You know, that's a great boost to our country. They spend money and plus the traffic gets better, and y'all don't have to create them anymore.
You are a good one. Marvin, you pick too. Specialize, it's going very fast. I need a motion on item number ten, how much, I'll second it. Bill Cox, you ready?
Marvin Nolan? Paul Story?
Yes.
Clark, the ferry?
Yes. Uh, discuss and... Most of the, each service.
How much is it?
Three, I think, only three sixty-seven a day, is that what it says? A day, per key, I mean, every day we leave one of those, so we can get to the car. On item number eleven, I'm gonna make a motion. Item number eleven.
Paul Story?
Yes.
You made a motion, did you agree to that?
I guess, then, ask Martin too.
I said I made a motion to...
You made a motion, but you never did explain what it was for. Don't you accept it?
I'm gonna make a motion to accept, I make, I'm gonna make a motion to accept item number eleven.
Paul, when you have an opportunity, may I say something?
Same thing, just took out fifty million, boy. Do you want Clark to sign this? It's just a, just a copy. Make a motion, item number twelve.
Paul, just to say it's...
Make a motion to accept. I'll second it.
Paul, Story?
Yes.
Clark, the ferry?
Yes. Well, the branded bridge here...
And we have somebody who like fire or something, can I, this?
You ready?
Yes.
Oh, you, you would like fire?
Yeah.
Okay, and, Ken, I'm guessing on them, out of them at thirteen, I'm gonna say no actually taken, 'cause he's not here, so...
Okay, sorry.
Ah, that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry, there wasn't nobody here before, I wasn't aware, I thought, Bert was gonna take care of all this, but, everybody's up the bump. Anyhow, he called last night, wanted to know if I could attend the meeting to, for the bid opening.
Have you looked, have you looked at the bid?
She won't come up here.
No. I didn't think it'd been open.
Yeah, we had opened them last week, but...
Is anybody here to...
Okay. I, uh, I had some questions on that, but, these, are these approved vendors for the county, I mean, do they carry their own insurance, are we liable for their...
No, I was told that they have, have their own insurance.
I just wanna be sure that, that was upfront knowledge.
Howard Stormont Construction. Twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars for Howard Stormont Construction, that's the first bid he looked at.
How much was it, Paul?
Twenty-one... Twenty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and that's from Howard Stormont. This is, uh, Mike Bush, and then... And then, for Mike Bush Construction. This is his bid right here, it's thirty thousand six hundred dollars, Mike Bush Construction.
Okay, hometown builder, is the man that's coming, twenty-six thousand eight hundred.
Twenty-six thousand eight hundred, hometown builder, that's your, that's your three options.
They, uh, the board, I'm, we have a board that's over there, so we have previously agreed to accept the low bidder as long as they were approved and had their own, but we're not liable in fact, we got that back.
Well, I suppose I'd get that off them before they start it.
Or a waiver, or something on work, they gotta, I don't know, whenever we come, we have to have either a waiver or approval thing, you know.
But I'm sure they'll provide that before they start.
Yeah, for us.
I just want one question, maybe add in on that, something that would be effective.
Yeah.
So, you gonna accept the lowest bid, Howard Stormont?
I'll, uh, accept.
As long as they was agreement, uh, the condition you have.
The three things you might specify, not, uh, butt in too much, but, you know, certificate of insurance for their liability and their workers' comp, and also prove, uh, I would assume you want them to carry the builder's risk while it's being built, so if a tornado came through, it burned down, you know, five minutes before it was finished and handed over, they're responsible for that insurance and you're not.
Some of those candid they all give, can't they be? Okay, so they, they were all putting on...
They do get all that, like Bill, like when we build a bridge or do a highway, or build a job, but it's like, you take, you accept the bid, and then all that information, you know, is late before you, after you accept the bid.
Right.
But everybody's aware of that before they even bid on the job.
Well, and I would assume they are, if that's what you wanna make sure you got on your checklist, now the work, the builder's risk is kind of important, 'cause sometimes the customer can provide that coverage, or sometimes a contractor does, but it's usually specified in the bid, uh, but you just wanna make sure you've got that.
Yeah, you wanna, once he accepts the bid, then he, he goes to get...
But you might confirm that with them upfront, to understand that they're providing the builder's...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Twenty-one, two twenty-two. Twenty-one, two twenty-two.
He just wanted a question, makes a doubt the insurance, I don't think so, I'm not sure that he is.
And he asked about the bid.
Yeah, I wanna, but I might couldn't get... I'm happy with you.
I'm happy with you, or, we're good.
And Marvin Nolan?
Yes.
Clark, the ferry?
Yes. Yes. Okay, we're down to item number fifteen.
One thing, uh, to start off with is, there's been a question by a lot of people, that if we can start tending to, uh, some special request in business items prior to the assignment of a location, so we'll reschedule the agenda, select that, there's a lot of people that just get back to work instead of staying here the whole time.
I have no problem with it, it's just they could change the agenda. I mean, I don't care, it's, it's irrelevant, I mean...
I mean, everybody just has to wait, you know, it's probably in here, not coming, so, uh, it'd be a lot easier on...
So just develop it, okay?
Well, we could just, just want to move discussion with the jail committee up to the top.
Well, and, and also new business, and, uh...
I have no problem with it.
It was discussed before, but I didn't, I mean, it wasn't...
That's, that's why I brought it up again, when people ask me about it.
Well, yeah, what do you think, Clark, you okay with it?
Yeah.
I, that's no big deal, that's no problem there.
No, discussed with jail committee.
Just that, new business up to the top, I'd like to recognize, yes, 'cause that's no big deal, and if we go from there.
There's forty-six prisoners today. And they are having some air conditioning issues in some of the units. One thing we want to talk about was the junior loan. Junior loan that was acquired in the two thousand fourteen payment. The loan amount is four hundred and fifty thousand. There's an estimated forty-eight thousand. They just set that limit that they pay an interest on. The committee and their interest on forty-eight thousand on the difference of twenty-six hundred fifty-five dollars a year. So the committee would like to address the bank to apply the forty-eight thousand to the unspent loan amount. So that we stop paying that interest on the waste of loan.
Sounds good, Doc. Sounds good to me.
We need to wait till Karen gets back to...
Yeah, we can't make any decisions until she gets back, but...
Well, then we can move on a little bit further and come back to it. I was wondering, the committee's wondering if there's anything about the cops grant, any updates or anything?
Yeah, but the woman that is, as you mentioned, preparing the grant, she was wanting some of our banking information. Our routing numbers, and I wasn't comfortable giving her that. So I don't know where she's gonna go from there, but I did not talk to her directly, but she called and they called and asked me, and I said, no, I don't believe we need to be giving out our... Access for people to withdraw money. So I don't, hadn't got to the bottom of that yet, why she'd be needing that. But I wasn't comfortable giving her those numbers.
Why would she need that?
I haven't talked, I know, but that's what she's asked for and I...
Do you have her name?
They did send, I was up there last Thursday, we go last Thursday. And we had talked some manipulation out there and Mon was getting it for.
Mona's not gonna give them that either, what they want to jail. We don't need to be giving that out. Now... I do have her name and number over in the office, and we can't talk to her about it and ask her why. But I'm not comfortable giving that out.
Do you want the committee to get involved in it?
If you want to, yes, I, but I mean...
If you'll provide me with that number, we'll get involved.
I'll get to the number soon.
What she's going after, but I feel like we, we all feel like we need to, if there are grants out there, we need to be getting them.
True.
This her, this her. Randy, see if that's her.
What's her name?
Edwards Consulting Services, Sheila Edwards.
That's her, Sheila Edwards.
I was calling the day that she was here. We'll look into that. Paul, you had told us earlier that you were going to have a decision for the, from the Attorney General's office. Did we ever done anything with that or were we out on it?
I guess the... Once again, the Farley talked to the, in the Commissioner's office. He said the Attorney General will not give an opinion on that. It will be left up to him. And Farley... Through Brandy said that he would... I got the message from Brandy. He said he'd been getting back with us on the decision, but it's gonna be... For the Attorney General, they're gonna leave it up to Farley.
As you read, the quarter is legal, do you put up?
That is correct. That's what the word I got back from Farley, through Brandy.
And has anybody inquired about it since?
Well, I just heard in the middle of last week, and I don't know if Farley's had time to research it. He usually gets back with us once he does his research and comes up with an answer.
Okay, you think that's obtainable by the end of this week?
I won't refer you to Farley because I don't know his work, workload this week, but... But I just know the decision will be in his hands.
So if that, if that decision is made, then after he makes it, will we be actually putting the full three-quarter in towards the jail debt?
Won't have any choice. Depends on which way, what he says. I mean, we'll have to go with what he says.
And also, there's another meeting. You said that you were going to have the audit that Graham Bodge did, that they were going to... Re-do that audit and adjust it. Has there been anything done on any of this?
I have not. They said it'd be due live, what I was told. But no, I have not heard back from them.
For the hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
For what now?
It was for in two thousand, June two thousand fourteen to fiscal year July two thousand fifteen, it was a hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred.
Right, okay, I thought you said eighty-five, but yeah.
And then, and then there would also be that amount from July to current. So it's gonna be a lot more than the hundred eighty-five, seven hundred. Because it's still not being put in, so it's gained very much. Yep, but Randy almost sold the land. That took care of a hundred eighty-five for each.
That's what I'm gonna say they planned to do.
So they agreed that they were gonna apply that?
Yes. When you were talking earlier, I mean, I... Jail could take care of for at least another year.
And then we asked, and you agreed to supply us with a projected cost of operation budget for the jail. And you, I believe, said that it was gonna be being prepared by Tom Merlot. Have we got that or is it stalled out or moving forward?
I guess I'm gonna have to, y'all gonna have to, I don't know, pretty risky and type me by the hand, because you know... Grant, I mean, Rick had the deal that the judge used, you know, to come up with the daily cost to keep a prisoner. And to get exactly what Rick was wanting, I'm gonna have to get the bill, you know, about the... The percentage of the cost of the insurance for the jail. I mean, that's...
So nothing's been done on it?
Well, not, not the, y'all specifications, but...
Was Tom, you explained to us that Tom was designing a budget? He had in a budget, had a potential budget. Is that not gonna happen or...
I presented some numbers, you know, I went and pulled all the POs and I understand that, you know... I understand what you're saying about figuring the workers' comp insurance and yada, yada, and all that, but of course... What it costs to run the jail a month, you know, with, I provided those numbers, but it wasn't...
They weren't accurate?
No, I think they were accurate. I mean, I got them off the POs. It's just I haven't done the math and the calculation on what the insurance cost on the jail. If you want to factor that in, in the workers' comp and that.
We've got to factor all the cost into... So is Tom, he's not, he was here earlier. Uh, he's not designing a projection file?
I don't think he is. Bill, you said, you mentioned something earlier in the meeting about getting what it costs for the jail stuff. I mean, we...
Yeah, I can get that probably, you know, with a date or so, or as quick as they can respond. Usually they're pretty quick about getting them anything, so...
And that's just one of the small fractions of it. So we still need to move forward on that. We need to get that finished. Also, the committee, I'd like to know, are y'all having weekly or bi-weekly meetings with all electorals? Y'all, are y'all gathering together and having a meeting at all? Share, anything like that?
No, I don't.
I mean, do you ever have a sit-down meeting with everybody attended?
No. I haven't.
Do you think we probably ought to?
Yeah, do you think all the elected officials ought to get together and have a meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Discuss county business, their needs. Their opinions, their ideas.
We get, we get all that in when we do the budget.
So once a year?
Once a year, we...
I'm talking about weekly or bi-weekly?
I expect to consult with them, see if they wanna be involved in that, I guess.
Well, it's just, just like the question come up a minute ago, whether or not you had the money to make the insurance premium payment. If you were meeting on a weekly or bi-weekly or two weeks meeting, then you could have all that stuff ironed out long before it gets here. And they would have a feel for what's going on, what their needs are.
Said this morning that they felt we needed to, and I guess, break to run the numbers or whatever, who knows the numbers. He said that he felt like we should pay the whole amount this year, but we have not in the last few years.
See, I don't think it's a good fucking thing.
We'd like for you to consider thinking about that and see if we can't get all the electorals together to have an open meeting, discussion, reach one of the departments and their needs.
Resident on my side, another side.
Yeah.
Maybe once a month, maybe like, I'm gonna take your time.
Don't you think you especially need one now? I mean, with everything that's going on and the problems we're all facing? I would think it would be a good thing to have one.
When we're all faced with the financial problems that we've got, that we've inherited. You know, it's, it's time for everybody to put their two cents worth in and their opinions and their ideas on how we're gonna achieve all this and accomplish. And if we don't get everybody together, get it in a joint manner, where we're all pulling in the same direction, it's probably not gonna happen. Whereas if everybody participates in it, and everybody's involved in it, and everybody takes ownership in it, and then maybe we can succeed at it.
You know, at this point, I'm gonna try anything.
Okay, if y'all would, just take that into consideration and think about it. We'll update what we find out from the bank about this extra money that's on the junior note.
And we're gonna talk to Sheila.
And I'll talk to Sheila. Everyone, one of us will. That's all we have.
Paul, what, uh... What is our experience mod on the workers' comp for the county?
So I could, I apologize.
Our experience mod on, on the workers' comp for the county, what is it currently? They said it should be on your new quote. Did you have it there?
I have the...
It won't be in there. That's the property liability.
This is property liability here. Workers' comp was like ninety-six thousand?
Our experience mod, they base that rate off of our experience mod. They said below what?
It's went down from last year, because last year, what would, what happened to newspapers I had that year? It was, last year was over a hundred thousand dollars. I had to Karen pull the figures. Last year, we spent a hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. It's like ninety-six, a little over ninety-six thousand this year.
Yeah, well, something went down, but I was just curious. Uh, I know they base your actual premium off your experience mod to give you deductions. Uh, you know, like your, your safety direct effect on that, amount of claims. And I was just curious what it was. Ours is like point eight-one.
Well, I can tell you, Heskey County, we're at the top in the state of Oklahoma.
On your experience mod?
Because we, we get ten thousand one year. We, we got ten thousand dollars bonus one year and twenty-five hundred several years. I mean, we're, we're at the top.
For accidents, pretty?
For acci, yes, for, you know, reportable accidents, let me put it like that.
Well, you know, like if you've got a point nine-three or nine-five experience mod, then you can shave it down to eight-something, then you save a considerable amount of money on your premiums. But if you already have a real good experience mod, then there's no room for it.
We have a good one, because like I said, I've, I know I've been up there personally, accepted four or five, four or five different years in a row, you know, with... Like, top three or four counties in the state, get a check, rebate, whatever you wanna call it. We're there, we're right, we're right at top about every year.
I can check with Karen and she'll have those papers in your office. I'll check the...
I, I know that the sheriff's office, just off the top of my head, that they did toggle a car this year. They hit a deer, I think. Something that it toppled.
When does that happen? What's it?
It's on your new policy.
It'd be on your policy.
It's a rate, it's a discount.
We have very few people, you know...
I think y'all just got a new policy, didn't you, Paul? We know, we know what the price is.
Well, but they, usually they don't, now, the private county, they don't send the policy. I tell later, they send the proposal out and it doesn't, may not have that detail, so... They might have last year's, but... And they, they may even tell me that when I check on this other. I'll ask them if they can look it up quickly for us.
I just...
Yeah, no, just, and, and I think just what you're talking is what everybody's talking about it. We're just gonna have to kind of look at everything possible and see where there's little savings here, or make sure somebody's given us the discounts you're supposed to get or whatever.
We may be able to establish some kind of new safety program and get that right down, save us ten thousand dollars.
Well, if I tell you about how to, how to lower the rates, I don't know if we could get it done, because they had a competition. But anyway, I'll tell, I mean, they said that, they weigh all the women in the courthouse and, and men. And that, I mean, it's the truth. Everybody steps on the scales and then the ones that lost the most weight and provided, like you're saying, a place to exercise and get everybody healthier. Now, that was one way of...
Saving on your...
Saving, but... I don't know how many women, I don't know if you're gonna make them all weigh up here and, and, you know, write her down and, and weigh up again in three, three months, so... If you can go through that rock, I'm all in.
I'm just curious.
Hey, that, there was a county, they had a competition. And, I mean, I'm, I say that kind of laughing, but that, they actually did that at that go and, and they did, I'm surprised, and they did lower.
Well, and, and, you know, having regular safety meetings and stuff like that can bring your rate down. And y'all probably already do that. I was, we was talking about insurance earlier and I asked about the experience mod and, and...
Well, that is one, one of the ways that we could save a little money if you can get them all to step on the scales.
How about stop tobacco use?
Do what?
That'll lower your premium?
Yeah, it will.
Well, stop tobacco use.
Tobacco use? Oh, tobacco use?
Yeah, tobacco.
That'd be more on your health insurance than on workers.
Well, that one deal was on the health insurance, you know, we paid.
Right.
And they... And there were several counties and they were both basically all women in the courthouse and they all, they all went like, well, it was a funny time, fun time up there.
Well, does our building for smokers, does that affect our insurance in any way? I, I don't know. Many people that have a special building for smokers, but...
Anyway, what, what did you have, what were your questions?
Well, I understand that we, last year, there was a conflict over parking and our use of the back parking lot. And in our discussions of that, you asked me to buy a round paper first to please notify every office in the courthouse whether or not... When reunion days was and whether or not we will be using the parking lot. On April the fourth, because I wrote it down on my calendar, I made a save the day poster. I went to every office in this courthouse. And I gave them one of those posters and I told them that we would not be using the back parking lot. And I forgot to call you or Marvin. Now, I never thought to call you or Marvin and tell you, but I went to Karen's office. Karen asked me about it on Friday night, she said she did, I wasn't, she wasn't in the office when I took it, but Judy remembers me taking it. I asked the Commissioner's office, Shauna Hudson in her office, and his office remembers me giving it to her and telling her that we were not gonna be using the back parking and, and Ron Love remembers him coming bringing it to his office. Rhonda's office, there was a lady, I can even tell you, she had on a red shirt the day it was in there, and you walk in the door and she's right there, and I asked her to let you know. If they did not let them know, that's not my fault, but you asked me to do it and I did it.
Hey, that part did I do on Friday night?
You, I, you turned to Judy and asked Judy if I remembered, if, first you said I didn't come to your office and I, I said, yes, I did, and you turned to Judy and asked Judy, did she-
This was in April, but I did this.
No, you did it Friday night, I came in April, but Friday night on the courthouse lawn at the gospel singing, you said, and you said, I said, you said something about, I hate doing this to be on the podium, and I asked not to be involved in this, because I don't, I am the Stigler Haskell County Chamber of Commerce, I am working for the county and I am working for the city. I am not employed by the city, but I wanna work with everybody and I wanna do everything I can, and I work really, really long hours to promote Haskell County and the city of Stigler. I'm not employed by the city of Stigler, we're under contract with them to do reunion days. But one of the things that's important to me is that I am an honest person, he asked me to do something, I did it.
And I'm the one that, when, I, she, I talked to her before the meeting and y'all all told me that you did not get a copy saying that, and I did not bring this young lady's name into the equation.
I did not get a copy, Norita had said that it was on the flyer, it's not on the flyer, I just went and looked at her flyer, it's not on the flyer anywhere, and I did not get a notice.
Also said she didn't get a copy, so-
Well, this is the thing, he asked me to do it, I did it, and I resent the fact that my word is being questioned. You told Judy, said in front of me, she remembered me being in your office, and I am upset, Paul.
Oh, yeah, but I, I-
It shouldn't be an issue, it should not be an issue, and I worked my tail off.
Okay, we, we can talk about it, let's just, let's just calmly talk about it, I'm, go ahead, go ahead and talk.
It's not your word they're questioning, it's, they're, they're calling me a liar.
I suggest they talk to whoever's in your office, I suggest, no, I'm gonna say this, just be quiet, you've been rude enough to me.
No, I, ma'am, I'm okay, hey, ma'am, I'm okay, I'm gonna tell you something. I, you can say it, you want to, but I'm gonna tell you, you need to read your open meeting laws. Technically, you don't have the right to talk and nobody else does. I, I allow everybody to talk because this is the county, but I've read the open meeting laws. Like right now, I don't have to let anybody talk. I do that, I do that because it's needed for the county, but don't be telling me I've been rude, 'cause I put up the-
I'm just asking you to, they're saying that they-
I wasn't in their office, I don't know if they got it or they didn't.
So let them ask the people that work in their offices and make sure-
And they just said she did.
Well, this one, I wonder if she did.
You're out of order, and you're more than welcome to go on the website and look up Oklahoma's open meeting laws and what you can and can't do in one. And I have been very liberal on it, because I want the people's voice to be heard. But I wasn't in Karen's office and I wasn't in Rhonda's office, I don't know if they got it or they didn't.
Well, let them ask.
Well, how can I, how can I defend anybody? I don't know if they got it or they didn't get it, I wasn't in their office. She's saying she gave it to them, they're saying she didn't.
I'm just saying let them ask their employees. They couldn't have asked them yet, 'cause you've been sitting here in this booth the whole time.
Well, they both just said that they didn't get it, I don't know if they did or they didn't.
We got the flyer.
You got, that's what I'm saying?
I got the flyer, but it was said that it was written on the flyer and I said it was not, it's not on the flyer.
And I did say, I'm not sure it was the flyer, but she did pass out some.
And that's all I said, and I did not get anything in writing, you said, and I wasn't, obviously, and she just said, I didn't call her liar, she just said she didn't talk to me.
I don't know what you, you know, I wasn't in there.
I don't think anybody was intending to question anybody's whether they're telling the truth or not, it was just simply a breakdown in communication. Paul and I did not get, get the message and, and that we was just strictly going on what had happened last year.
All we were trying to do is do it for the people, I mean, everybody took time off their time and we were just trying to be considerate of the people for reunion days. And that's all we were doing, and as far as what they got, I don't know, I can't spend being in every office, I don't know what time she went in there, I don't know if she did or she didn't.
Well, all she was trying to do was be considerate and give the parking back, because that was a problem to everybody.
Don't you think she should, it would've been good if she'd have told the commissioners?
Well, I don't know who all she told, but I do know some people got told, because they'll tell you.
She just said she didn't tell us.
She said she didn't tell you because she had talked to you already about it.
Last year. About the park, 'cause she come in there all upset and tore up the, about the parking, said we, we messed up her whole deal. And I said, I apologize, but I didn't know it was gonna be that big a deal. All we're trying to, all we were trying to do was respect the people for reunion days, and that's all we were trying to do.
Well, I think they should come to some kind of an agreement, try to figure out what's going on, because I don't believe she lied about letting you all know. And I don't believe that you lied about not being there, or you lied about not being there, but somebody in the office got the information and they evidently didn't pass it on to you all.
Well, anyway.
Well, we got a lot of complaints as the courthouse was closed, I mean, we did.
Well, I, we didn't close the courthouse. We don't have that authority, and I mean, I don't wanna fast-argue.
Karen didn't close the courthouse.
I don't want to close the courthouse.
We closed the courthouse, I'll say it here on camera, Paul's story, Marvin, I mean, Clark McLaren closed the courthouse. We were trying to do it for the convenience of the people of Haskell County, 'cause it was a big problem last year, I had Ron come up here, keep the door open for anybody who wanted to use the restroom. Everybody in the courthouse took time off their time sheet for it. And all we were trying, and I'm telling you, I'd appreciate it if you would read the Oklahoma Open Meeting Laws Act on the website, you can look it up. And I'm gonna tell you something, like I said, I don't have to let anybody talk. I do it because the people need to talk and I respect the people and I want the people to have a voice, but when they overstep bounds, I'm just asking everybody, if it's on the website, you can read it. But we, we had no ill intentions towards nobody. And I, once again, I'm gonna say it and I'm done, I don't know what she gave the offices or what she didn't, I was not there.
Well, she was just trying to solve the problem, because everybody got, we got an awful lot of people coming in complaining.
I thought I was interrupting you, I apologize, I-
Well, no, I was just gonna say, I mean, it was just strictly done to try to help the chamber and the people trying to do reunion days on, I mean, and, we didn't get the message and for whatever reason, but that, it was, that was the reason that Paul and I, we, we discussed it Thursday morning and that's what, what our decision was based on was all the problems that arose last year.
Well, and, and the only thing that we just, 'cause we didn't know anything about it, and we even got complaints in the, in the historical society, and she got complaints in the chamber. A lot of people came in and they were very mad and upset and they were asking why was the courthouse closed?
Ma'am, let me-
We didn't know and she didn't either, and she just told.
Let me tell you a little story of my, my first year as commissioner, about people like that. We're out there getting the road ready to oil and chip it, and the man that lived on that road, he's come out and said, Paul, you ain't done nothing but, like, stirred up a bunch of dust out here. I said, yes, sir, yeah, yes, sir, sorry about that. We all chipping it smooth as silk, he come out there and said, Paul, you didn't do nothing to create a racetrack out here. So, you know, ma'am, them comments you're hearing, I'm tired of hearing them. No matter what you do, somebody's gonna complain just like that road. It was too dusty for him, I all chipping it, it's smooth as silk, people are driving, apparently complaining about that. Like I said, once again, all we were trying to do is be considerate of the people of Haskell County and give them that one day, an opportunity to enjoy reunion days. If we made a mistake, so be it, but that's enough said on it.
I just don't want to talk to you all.
That's enough said on it, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna be rude to you, I apologize if I am, that's enough said on that. Now, do we have any new business? Any more new business?
I'd like to say something about solving that problem. Next year, reunion days, maybe if we can make a joint effort to communicate back and forth with everybody involved. I think it's a good idea to shut the courthouse down on Friday because of all the people that were here, but we should probably notify the people in the paper to let them know that it's gonna be closed on that Friday.
I agree with you, I have no problem with that.
But me being a county clerk, I'll say this, and I'm, I'm a little bit, but it always comes to my, to me, to let the people know, that's not my fault, because, I mean, I can't help it.
Well, historically, that's just what happened when Gil was here.
I'm just saying next year, if we all make a joint effort, try to get the city and county work together. I just, I mean, we've had so much going on up here and everything, I just realized that reunion days, when the paper come out.
It slipped up on me, too.
Too late to, to notify them, so. Well, let's try to remember next year, maybe we can resolve all that. But I think it's a good idea, because I was here, y'all were here, there's a lot of people here. It'd be hard to conduct business in and out of the courthouse with everybody coming and going, best thing to do would be to shut it down. Yeah, first can't find places.
I say it at that ocean.
You can't find parking, but handicap couldn't fit in at all, there wouldn't be any place to lay their, their vendors parked.
Even if you don't have something that's in school there.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
People just didn't know. They just didn't know.
I don't personally have nothing against the law.
Yeah, and I'm not, and they're gonna come in the first open door.
No, neither.
The blame got put on us, that's why I defended my office, because when the blame gets put on us, then we're gonna say what we know and that's all we know.
Well, that, that's me, I always-
Okay, so if anybody got called a liar, if you look now.
Hey, thank everybody for being here, I'm gonna make the most of it, we're jarring.